Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, January 22nd. My name is Jim Lehan. To my right is Mr. Rob Garrity, to my left is Mr. Scott Dougby, fellow members of the board. Mr. Bragdon, our human resources director is with us this evening. Sue Jacobson is replacing our beloved Marion Harrington, who unfortunately is a little under the weather this evening, and Mr. Jack Hathaway, our town administrator. Jack, would you read the agenda, please?
Be happy to. Meeting of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen for January 22nd, 2013. Called meeting order at 7:00 PM. First order of business, taxi license applications. We have two different ones. And then 7:30, we have a discussion of Lake Street care and maintenance, followed by the town administrator report and acceptance of minutes for December 4th, 11th, and January 8th.
Thank you very much. I do need to advise everyone, this meeting is being video and audio taped. So we will, gentlemen, please come join us. You are, sir, you are, Mr. --
Kamal Maru.
Okay, please, please come up and join us, sir.
Thank you.
I'll move over.
Maurice Parkashi.
Good evening.
So just as way of background, as you remember recently, you approved the new Hackney policy. In that policy has room for four licenses, for licensors. We have two already. During that interim period of time, people were applying, so I went back to them and the order I received them. These two gentlemen were the first ones on the list. They've indicated they would like to move forward and get a Norfolk Hackney license. We have, they have provided me with background checks from Corey, which both are clean. So the next step is for you to meet them and give a general approval of a license, if you so wish, and then I would put them through the rest of the approval process with chief of police and the state. So Maurice, you want to start? Tell them a little bit about yourself.
Kamal.
Come out.
Kamal. Yeah, Kamal Maru. I apply for a license. I live in Norwood and I drive a taxi there, which is, I don't own, you know, I'm leasing. And the taxi business there is somehow where you are under the, under the mood, I mean, the owners of the cabs is limited. And then depends of some kind of dictating to us and no, no rules at any time, at will, anyone can take the cab from you and go home. You have no job. And I used to live in Brighton for 23 years. I moved to Norwood four years ago, and now I'm looking to move to a two-bedroom, smaller. My mother used to live with me for 11 years. And for my wife and my little son, Adam, my second marriage, my late wife passed away. And looking forward to move toward Walpole area here, so I could be closer to Norfolk, because I see the processes coming on hopefully smoothly. And I own no taxi business or license of my own. This is, will be my first one, if you approve mine. And the reason I'm moving there to Walpole also, because I want to get out of all of Norwood business, it's so crowded there now. And, and to establish, my son also, Tarek, he, Mr. Scott knows, he applied also, but the mail did not arrive here yet to Marianne. Then when he reapply again, a week later, he was pushed to number five. So, and, and we were talking that we're ready to do advertisement and be here more than 70, 80% of the time. From Walpole, I will be at Norfolk station, I was just discussing, instead of being at the Amtrak there in Dedham, Westwood. And I'll do all the advertisement. My son is studying business management also, he's doing, will do everything for me. And I hope I could be an asset for the town, at least I will show my presence here. And I explained to Mr. Scott, I'm ready to agree to, will do some leaflets, taxi, support local business. That's what I am planning to do in Norfolk. And my first advertisement will be here, if you allow me at this, at the town hall, if you need me, I'll be ready. And we'll go to every gas station, the stores, and the train station, and be ready within 30 minutes, you know, depend on the, how you call, rush hour is different. I'm not familiar very much, but with GPS, you can know, and I drive in Cambridge for years. So I'm able to pick up and serve the community here in Norfolk, because I said, I was moving to another apartment house in Norwood, but now I'm going to move to Walpole to be closer. I will be like, right now, I'm seven miles, eight miles away. I want to be like five miles. So that will give me ample time if I'm called for any services here, small or big. And hopefully we'll make it, and if you be in my, in my cab, you will see my service, how it will be. I mean, it's, that's my plan and--
Very good. All right. Scott?
So do you, how long do you think it will take you to get a car, you know, besides, you know, how soon do you think you're going to get a car and be ready to, you know, get police approval, if we approve it?
If you approve it, within a month or two, I will be having everything handy together. I'll look for a nice, clean taxi, cab, not a van, and another one also. And we'll place it online. There is a time limit, I will be within the time limit to do that. No, but I will be one of the, you will see, that will be the first to serve this town here, not elsewhere.
Agreed.
And as I said, I have no other licenses anywhere, only in, from a food.
Rob?
You're going to need licenses somewhere else, too. Norfolk's not enough to support a taxi. We just don't have that much business for it.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is, in Norfolk County, when you have one, like in Norfolk City, you can work with it anywhere. But I need no place to, you know, to apply, and I want to be on my own limits, except, you know--
And the thing we want to be, we want to make sure of is that you are serving Norfolk people, because you're going to be under our taxi.
That's what I'm saying.
Had a very unpleasant experience with one of our first two licensed taxis, where we called them in the morning for a ride, for a girl going to work, and, you know, they didn't show up, and it took 45 minutes, and she was late to work, and I don't want to see that happen again. So I know that both of you gentlemen are getting your taxi licenses here, basically to work everywhere. But I want you to know that if we get any complaints about you not taking fares in Norfolk, blowing them off, that will be met with instant action on the license. Okay? We are not the dumping ground for Norfolk County's taxi service.
Yes.
All right? All right. So that's, that's all I got to say.
I've also made it clear to all four licensee, the potentials, that over the coming year, I will be testing all of them, so make sure that--
I love your story. I'm glad you're starting your own business, and that's great.
No, but that's what, you know, it's, and wanted to go with it, with it little by little, and once I have mine, I will save the lease money, or paying 50/50. I said, if I start to slow here, I was still making the same amount which I'm making now, because I don't have anyone else to pay. And I don't think I will need any license anywhere else, because I, I'm not going to have a plethora of it everywhere around the area.
Okay.
And I'm not going to have two apples, or you, as in the Bible said, you can serve two masters, isn't it? One or the other. I mean, that's it.
Well, we, we love to see people start new businesses and have those opportunities, and if we can be supportive of that, we try very hard to do that. So as Rob said, you have a wonderful story, and we hope you're successful at it. We do hope that you will maintain the standards that you've established for us here this evening and service the town. That would be a wonderful thing. I don't know to what degree we have the need. I know that the years I've been on the board, all of a sudden, there's an increased interest in taxi services, and that's okay. That's a good thing, so--
I mean, once the advertisement and people, of course, they have to go to the airport, T.F. Green of Boston, once they know, will go and add to it, like support local business. I see it every time.
It's, it's a good thing.
They will preferably call Norfolk licensed taxi over Norwood, or Canton, or Foxborough, Walpole.
I think you will find this town very much that way. We like to support in-town businesses, and it's one of the, you know, we call ourselves a community for that reason. I think we're really very much try to help each other out. So we wish you the greatest success, and I just reinforce Rob's comments, that we do hope and expect that you'll meet the standards that you've spoken to here this evening, and we'll all have a very happy relationship.
Thank you.
Any--
Rob? Great. Okay. Rob? So I move to approve a license for Kamal Maru.
Second.
Contingent upon approval of vehicle by the chief of police.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. And--
My name is-- I'm sorry.
No, the only thing is, I'm willing to have the two taxis on the line, because that's what I'm planning for.
What's the rule, Scott?
You've approved multiple licenses for other, others.
And if I need anything, option three, I will be back here, asking for it if you, with your approval. Because my son needs it more than I do, but as I said, his own application just arrived, unfortunately.
Well, I can only assume with your son's now business school background, that if you do go to option three, it's because there's a financial need to do so. So that would be a good thing.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Maurice Parkashi. I live in Dedham. For a long time, I was looking for something for my son. I heard from a friend of mine, he approved over here for license, and then I rushed, I came like quick to here, honestly. And I applied for the taxi, and I was thinking like, my dream is going to be coming true. Stick too long, and I'll be happy to serve like Norfolk, and for sure, nobody going to be complaining about us if you approve it for us. And thank you very much if you let us like serve Norfolk.
Scott, did you have anything to add?
Do you have any licenses anywhere else?
I just got license, one license in Foxborough. But I love to have a license from here, but I applied over here first, take too long, and I just got the license from, I applied and then they give it to me. But I still, I'll be happy to have a license from here, because I love Norfolk, and I applied the first over here.
Do you live in the general area?
They don't have enough taxis to get all those people home from Gillette Stadium.
Yeah, there you go. We should take them all home in taxis.
No kidding, there was a cab from Connecticut.
Oh, it wouldn't surprise me.
At the McDonald's.
At the McDonald's?
Well, that's where they pick them up, the McDonald's.
Okay. Hopefully, they're not having dinner there.
Yeah, but the only thing, in Gillette Stadium lately, they are, they are asking no one is to pick up their, except Foxborough taxis and--
No, no, even like Foxborough, they don't let me. They don't want--
You're not supposed to be picking them up, but everyone does.
No, no, actually lately, I don't know, that's the first, the first game, like I've been in the taxi, like last game, like, not this one. And they don't let me.
Yeah.
Now.
Well, that's Foxborough's business, I guess, yes.
So where do you live, Maurice?
I live in Dedham. And I think like, I'm going to move like this way, hopefully.
Okay. Can I just give you the same?
I live, I live like with my mom and my sister. I'm going to marriage next year.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I like this area, probably I'm going to move for sure, the next couple of years here, the next, and I'll, I'll be happy to serve like this town.
I'd just give you the same warning, you know, we're a small town, so if somebody complains to us, we're going to all hear it, and it will make us come down on you guys when, you know, someone gets blown off.
I agree.
So let's just make sure everyone gets served, and that's--
I agree. And I'm looking for like two license as possible.
Well, we allow multiple cabs in at same license, so.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much.
Mr. Garrity is our sergeant-at-arms of the board.
Thank you. Sort of my fault, isn't it?
Not at all, not at all. Point well taken.
I move to approve a license conditional upon approval of vehicle by the chief of police. For Maurice, the Parkashi?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We wish you both great success, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
So give me a call tomorrow, and we'll talk, get through the rest of it.
Do you need a ride to work tomorrow?
Thank you very much.
Pick me up, yeah.
Only live three houses from me, I'll be glad to drive you down.
Save the money.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. Good luck. Congratulations.
If I, if I could take your time on a different subject for one minute? Thank you.
Be safe this evening.
Is it in the agenda?
You got 12 minutes.
I think you do know this, but I just wanted to say that last week, we had the, our new insurance company had the, our training facility in, it was a trailer for the police. It was a simulator, so they went through, the police all went through a class, then they all went through various scenarios on the simulator. I think it was terrific. I think they all learned some stuff. Some of them were tough, these scenarios. Coming this spring, they're going to come back for another week, and they'll put the firefighters through. They have simulations for both fire trucks and the ambulance, so it's one of the benefits from this new insurance company. I think it's, it's a great thing.
Are they driving sometimes?
Absolutely. They sit down in a police car, they have, they're talking on the radio, the guy's talking to them, and they, different things happen. They might have a guy pull out in front of them, or they get called to a call. Jack saw it, and, you know, they have--
Did we put Jack through it?
Yeah. They have a, they have a big screen in front, and then screens on the side.
No, we did the shooting one.
Well, that was the shooting one.
Yeah.
They have simulators like this. Both Jack and I went through this once at the meeting, where you--
Oh, did you?
Get confronted with some armed situations, and you have to react to them and so on. They're pretty authentic.
Yeah.
You don't know how good that makes me feel, that you've practiced, you know, taking down--
They're taser training yet, no.
So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, so.
There is a side story to that, but I can't, I'll tell it another time. It was, it was a pretty neat experience. Those machines are pretty neat.
Good job, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
The side story is Jim wouldn't give up until he got the best score.
It is a competitive streak.
I did bring, I did bring some extra pens since Marion wasn't here.
Don't worry, Jack, I've got four over here.
You do, don't you?
Yeah, he's always got color-coded.
You guys think it's me. That's not fair. We are not due for Lake Street till 7:30, so why don't we get into your report, Jack?
Actually, I don't have a lot of report, because, I don't have a lot of report today. I did talk to a couple emails back and forth with Mr. Balone from Hoboken Brownstone, and I forwarded one of those to you late in the day today. They still haven't done the deal with the archdiocese. He's waiting for the archdiocese. I responded back to him and said, you know, if we're going to try and make the Maytown meeting, we really got to make some serious progress this month, because the deadline for articles is in February. His response was, well, if we get control of the company, we'll do that. If not, I mean, control of the property, we'll do that. If not, it didn't sound like they were, they would, you know, put much more effort into this until they get control of the property, so.
Let me, let me ask what I think is a fairly logical question. Are they going to condition this purchase on appropriate zoning?
Uh, yeah. He was looking for a year or two of conditioning, if I remember the discussions they had.
Okay.
I just don't, my guess is he probably doesn't want to put any more--
I can't imagine, I can't imagine that they're going to do this deal without those conditions.
No, no, I just think, I, my guess is he doesn't want to put any more money into the project based on the progress, the lack of progress that's been happening so far with the archdiocese, so.
Okay.
All right. He doesn't want to spend legal money writing warrant articles and figuring out his zoning.
Do we have any articles in yet?
Um, we've got full articles, no, but we've got some, there's been some interest from a couple of potential buyers down in Shire Development that want to submit some, each with a slightly different article for different, adding to the use table for the, what is it, the C3, C, whatever, the district--
C2?
C6.
C6?
The C District, um, commercial district down in Shire. So the zoning table tells you what allowable uses are, and they, there's some, what would probably be deemed as trucking-type applications for the, for the potential buyers. So we'll have to consider if we, A, if we want that, and I will probably have Economic Development Committee go talk to those potential buyers and see if they want to help sponsor an article. Of course, I could help them with it, too, if, if they don't want to.
And how's the budget process going?
Budget's going. Department heads are working on their, each individually, you know, so we'll know more by the end of this month, as they start turning those in. We're looking for, you know, level funding and level services at this point. Hopefully, we won't have to, I'm certain, I'm fairly confident we won't expand beyond that. Whether or not we have to have some more contraction, we'll see, but--
We'll see what happens at the end of this week.
Yeah, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Murray is having a conference call tomorrow morning with, I got invited to today as a listen-only participant to hear a little bit about the budget, so. And they're, and the governor's support of local aid and education, so we will see.
Well, I mean, I know we all hear this Friday morning.
Yeah.
Folks at home, we're, all of us are heading into, as is Mr. Hathaway, we're all heading into a meeting with other selectmen that we go to annually, where we get the budget forecast for the following year, we hear about state aid. Sometimes the news is a little, how can I say this politely, convoluted? The messages get packaged in very strange ways.
Packaged, yeah. Excellent work.
When you, when you sort through the packaging, usually you can find out the facts, but it's, I guess I view it as homework now.
They've been talking to everyone about more Chapter 70 money, but the way--
We'll see on Friday.
Yeah, and I, I'm afraid that he's going to earmark it to things he wants to do, like universal preschool.
Yeah, I do, I mean--
Well, it'll be interesting. I mean, we've kept this agenda light this evening pending our meetings, although we'll have lots more to talk about, I think, when we get back from this. But it's, it's going to be quite interesting to see what he has to say. Excuse me, could I ask you folks, we're still in a meeting, so if I could ask you to--
We're on TV.
We would be grateful. Thank you. Either that, or we'll have to make you say your name and address, so the folks on TV will know who you are. Thank you very much.
Anyway, just to finish that conversation, just, I know the governor's certainly talked about potential revenue increases and adjusting sales tax versus income tax.
Right.
And then using that for education purposes and transportation, so be an interesting budget season.
Well, I hope we get a Q and A, and I hope one of us, I hope, if we have in past years, I hope one of us can get to the front of the line, so we get to ask the question, because I sure know what mine's going to be. Because I just, I still do not understand, I mean, I understand it, but I so strongly disagree with what he did regarding prison mitigation funding. I mean, if he needs, what was it, $2 million was the total budget for prison mitigation money?
I don't even think that much. I think it was 1.8?
Well, let's round it up and say it's $2 million. Why, why he couldn't take that $2 million out of the general ledger, so, you know, out of the state aid component, spread that over 350-some-odd towns, and it would have had minimal impact on all of us, and yet support the very towns that have partnered with the state to provide those services, instead of nailing the five to seven towns and communities that do it. And it just, it's wrong. It is just absolutely wrong.
Within a week of taking away state aid, and Bob, Mr. McGee is here, he can attest to this, we, or he stepped out, I guess.
Or he's right in the middle of it. Or he's sitting right there, quite.
He's incognito.
It's when they're in the middle that they're hard to find, yeah.
We got a call from the prison, and we needed to help them out with their water. They had, I don't know what the exact issue was, but they needed additional water, and it's not the first time we've done it. We connected, turned to open the valves, and provided them water for a few days, and, you know, I'd love to call the governor and say, sorry, we can't do that anymore, but--
Why don't we just send them a bill?
Well, we do. We, we charge them for the water.
No, I meant the governor.
Actually, Jack and the other members today, I had to have a conversation with Guardian Energy, which is a company which was doing some work for us on energy efficiency retrofits in the town hall, which we had budgeted at that town meeting. And they came back to us and said, okay, here's what we can do for you, you'll save about $3,000 a year if you do this. And I had to say, I'm sorry, the money that we had set aside to do this work is now gone. So I'm sorry, we can't, we won't be able to save that, that money on the electricity side. Thanks, too.
Well, it is what it is, but hopefully we'll have some opportunity for some lively discussion on that. They avoided it last year. We never got the chance. What else, Mr. Hathaway? We have a couple of minutes.
We have some minutes to approve.
Why don't we get those out of the way?
Sure. I move, we approve the minutes of December 4th, December 11th, January 8th, both regular and executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Just the ear, I can't hear. Well, we're, well, we probably should give folks a couple more minutes. It's, make sure those that want to be here can be here this evening. Sue, is there anything new on affordable housing side?
82 Main Street closed last week, and 47 Rockwood is closing on Thursday.
Good news. And I, and I understand that, that construction may start soon on the fourth home.
On the corner of Fordman and Midway Branch.
Yes.
Yep. And some--
He was in today, making sure he had the right plans, so that was--
Yeah. And then it's located--
Trees this time?
And then it's located in the right place?
Yes.
That would be good.
He does know the place location.
That would be good.
Yeah, I will say, Mr. Herter, who is the current builder, is, I mean, you've worked with him more than I have, but he's been a pleasure to work with.
He has, yeah. Three is the magic number. Took us three tries, but we've, we've gotten someone that's really been a good partner with the town, so.
Maybe we could have Bob come up, I'm sure there's--
Yeah. Bob, come join us, if you would, sir. We're going to pass out some microphones again, hopefully.
I'm also passing around a sign-in sheet, if you--
Oh, okay. There is a sign-up sheet circulating. If you'd be kind enough to fill it out, we would appreciate it. Mr. McGee, welcome.
Thank you.
Just make sure the green light is on.
I guess we're close enough to 7:30, and we can stick it on. First, thank you all very much for coming back. Hope everybody had a safe and peaceful holiday. We, I, I think, just briefly, just to sort of recap, the whole discussion on a road is kind of unique. The years I've been on the board, we've never had a discussion like this, but then I don't think we have a road quite like Lake Street anywhere in the town. So our, in, our intent with this whole process was to try and, and find some consensus, or at least a solution to what has been, I think, somewhat of a difficult set of circumstances for everybody. I mean, there are clearly differing views in this audience as to what answers are appropriate, and there are issues from the town side that we can't ignore, that we have to deal[1714.32] deal with. I think one of the things I may have done last time has caused more confusion than I intended when I said that it is not an accepted road. Um, it is not an accepted road, but we have a lot of roads in Norfolk that are not accepted roads. It is in fact a public way, and as such, as a public way, it is the property of the town, it is owned by the town, and it is the responsibility of the town. Um, if it were an accepted road, it would have to meet conditions that that road currently does not, um, and more than likely, probably never would, uh, without major changes, and I don't think anyone wants that. So, um, we met two weeks ago as a board, which is the first opportunity we've had to, uh, together, kind of talk about this, and I think each of us on our own independently have talked with public safety officials and Mr. McGee and other parties to try and sort through how we can best come to some solution that hopefully provides some, some degree of satisfaction. I don't know that we're ever gonna get a consensus, but, you know, we're gonna try to find something, 'cause you folks live there, you have to live with the road, but we have certain things that we have to do. And there are public safety issues, we talked a lot about public safety last meeting, uh, but there are some public safety issues that are of concern to the town, um, to our public safety officials and to the DPW, and, and we're gonna talk more specifically about those in a second. But in way of background, this road is about a mile long, and we have, uh, I believe about 70 miles, about 70 miles of road in the town of Norfolk. So this represents less than 2% of the roads that we have to work on in the town of Norfolk, and we have a lot of roads in disrepair. Um, there was some feeling that the money that we spend on an annual basis was okay. I, I want to share with you that it's not. Uh, we, we are spending 20% of our maintenance budget on one mile of road, when we have 70 miles of road to maintain. So that is not an option for us. We, we certainly represent you folks, but we represent 9,900 other folks that live on the other 69 miles of road, and I will be honest, I've had more feedback about this meeting than any other meeting I've ever dealt with while on the board. So, um, a lot of people have watched, and a lot of people are interested, they understand, but, uh, roads probably are the most volatile conversation that we ever have. I mean, uh, we, we never seem to, we never have enough money to do what we need to do, um, and we never seem to be able to resolve it. Someone's always kinda angry at us about roads, but we, we do the best we can. But we cannot continue to spend the $15,000 to $17,000, which is what we are spending. We cannot continue to spend $15,000 to $17,000 maintaining a road when there are solutions over time that are more economical to the town and, quite frankly, are better for public safety. So we have weighed all those, and, um, so, status quo is not an option that we can live with. We, we have to do something. So with that, I, I'd like Mr. McGee to share with you, um, there are two options that are before us, and then we'll open it up to you folks to talk about these two options, uh, as to what we can do to help mitigate some of this. So, Bob?
Um, since we met last, I thought it was pretty interesting, given the problem and just the support which Jim was saying, that, um, when you have a situation like this, it was, it's, it was, as the DPW goes out and makes a repair on the street, it's to the satisfaction of some, and when we make a different application type repair, it's to the dissatisfaction of some, and, and I thought it was a great thing that we all got together to get everybody in a room to find out, uh, what it is that, so you people could look at one another yourselves and, and decide what it is that you want to do. And the interesting part to me was that when I got a chance to talk to Jack alone, I think he heard the crowd say one thing, and I got a chance to talk to Jim, and I think he heard the crowd say another thing, and I, I, I pulled a third thing out of it. So I'm really quite not sure. I know that, you know, a bit of crowd philosophy is at work here. I know that some of the, uh, the, the more passionate people may seem to represent the majority, but I'm really not sure of that. And I just wanna, you know, I'd like to, before I go too much further, convince you that it is, um, I'm totally devoted to doing what this board recommends, and I only want to supply the facts, um, for the different applications that I know of. Unfortunately, uh, there is only two. Uh, one being the asphalt, we talked about that. Uh, just speak a little bit about it again, because me, and only my opinion, um, from a DPW maintenance standpoint, it's the best application for maintaining and, um, and financially. I think, from everything that I heard, that the asphalt application, I'm not talking about a full-blown road, I'm talking about something that will make, that will, uh, keep that road, identify the road with what it is, a little bit to what it is today. In other words, I'm not suggesting that we go down there and bring in water, and we bring in sewer, and we widen it for sidewalks and all that. I'm thinking, uh, strip of asphalt, 16, 18 inches, uh, 18 feet wide, and only a binder course at that, and have natural drainage where we can, um, just side slope a little bit, uh, because as, the, it, road's a little bit interesting, it has two different characteristics. It, uh, it kinda co, carves itself through the grade, which means that if you go down to some section of the road, you'll see that the, uh, the road is up straight, straight up and down like that. This has a pitch this way, but where it levels off, you know, it's not good for drainage necessarily, 'cause it runs lateral, laterally with the road. You want water to run off equally and without one-point discharge. And on some parts of the road, I don't think I have a picture of it here, it kinda, it's kinda like a dam, it separates a, a wetland on both sides, and you want to be careful what runs off onto that. So I'm not talking about, and the pavement, I'll move on to the other, other application pretty soon, um, but, um, for that, we have a cost associated with it, which turns out to be a little bit less than the gravel application. I could speak more about the asphalt, but, you know, like I said, you probably, I'm not trying to sell you, so I'll spend just as equally amount of time on the gravel part of it, but that's what I think with the asphalt would cure, um, again, the maintenance. Uh, the asphalt will allow the water to run off and sheet and go off clean. It will keep us from further widening the street, 'cause very smartly, some, some of you residents pointed out that, as we go down there and we grade it and we plow it and stuff, we continue to widen the road, and there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of unique and, you know, a lot of resources there, uh, that I, I, we don't want to play any part in destroying, and, but with the gravel, you know, what we find ourselves in this situation, potholes that we're to continuously come back to, and we find out that the water takes the gravel off to the sides and it infiltrates the wetlands, so there's, there's a few things for you to consider in that. I talked to, uh, I went to a seminar, put on Bay State Roads, put on by Bay State Roads, not since our last meeting, but it was kind of interesting and funny with, like, one of the guy, the speaker was, who's, uh, he's from, uh, Michigan or something like that, where he, he does a lot of gravel roads, and, uh, the three things wrong with gravel roads is, the funny part, is water, water, and water. It's just, without water, it'll last forever, and, but that's exactly what deteriorates a road, and in New England, there's, uh, no doing without it. So that's my speech on the asphalt. Uh, I, you know, at any time during this, if you want to interact, I'm, I, I'd love it. If you got a question, I'd, I'm all ears, and I'll be glad to answer it, do you answer any questions, if that's okay, Rob?
Not exactly your meeting, but that's okay.
No, I just don't know if I'm saying the right thing or the wrong thing.
You're doing fine.
I know asphalt, I don't know the gravel as much, but the second application, again, I talked to, I talked to, uh, we talked as a, uh, the last board meeting about another application, and that is, uh, we have an existing condition on the main street side of, of, um, Lake Street where it's asphalt, and we're proposing to do what this, uh, uh, second alternative is to fix that asphalt up and restore it to new, to the extent that it is right now, and I think it's like 1,800 feet or something like that, whatever it is, down to number 16 or number 18. I recommend it to the board also that we go up the other end on the Medfield, uh, Midway Street side, and asphalt down about, uh, 500 feet, uh, don't have a certain 540-something feet, because that's where that, uh, the lake is getting the runoff from all the gravel that we continue to put in there. The water just, it's stuck between two banks, again, it just takes our gravel down, this, down there, and it empties out, and it's forming a peninsula into that beautiful little lake. And I'm thinking that if we just asphalt down there, we can get the water to come off clean and eliminate that problem. For the remainder of the street, about 2,500 feet, 2,400 feet, we get into, if we're gonna stick with the gravel, uh, we get into a process where, um, I contacted another company with the help of somebody local in this town that led me to this company, that does it for a living, it's raffity, uh, fine grading, they do a lot of this in Connecticut, because Connecticut's got quite a few gravel roads. And what they do is they'll come in and reclaimate the street. Reclamation is not new to us, we reclaimate asphalt right through, and we pulverize it down 12 inches, it mixes the, the asphalt with the gravel in it, and they take the surplus away, and then they grade that out, compact it, and put down new asphalt. Somewhat the same application here, except without the asphalt. They'll come in and they'll reclaimate the street down 12 inches, they'll turn up all the gravels, because it's had so much time to sit and filter out, and, um, it's not an even mixture. They'll get an even mixture of this, and the last thing they'll do is they'll grade up, and we'll truck away four to six inches before you, like your driveway heights, so it, uh, so below what would be considered finished grade. And then just the last thing we do there is, they'll come through and they'll scarify what they had already reclaimed, and they'll put a calcium chloride in it. And what it does is it takes that gravel, it infiltrates into that gravel, and it makes it hard and crusty. And it's not indestructible by any means, but it's a lot, uh, more durable than what would remain on the surface. So at this point, we leave that there, minus four to six inches. Then we come in with a, uh, this is his recommendation, I have the proposal right here. They come in with that milling material that we, we began to make an application with, and they spread that out four to six inches up to finished grade, that's shaped, rolled, and compacted. These people will come in and do a profile on the street, which means that they'll get the pitch and the runoffs to go where they, so they'll engineer the street in short. Uh, so they'll put that fi, final grade on with that material, if it's acceptable to you. And what will happen in the future is, that material will compact very well, and it's not as durable as an asphalt, it's a, and if you stand there with your car like a teenager would and spin the wheels or something like that, it will form a pothole. But because it's six inches, or four, four to six inches, it's like the skin on us, um, it's, it's repairable, I can come out and take a wheelbarrow and throw the same material product down, or go up there with a front-end loader and just backblade it front, back and front, and fill that in, because it's all the same material, uh, run a compactor over it and restore it. And, of course, he's trying to sell his product, and I'm, I've semi-familiar with it, um, but those are the two, uh, those are the two applications. And with that application, what I would recommend, Jim, is that we come in, you know, twice a year, probably before the winter, to make sure it's all, you know, in good shape, and then, you know, what happens is it snows and we plow it. And if he forms a crown or if he banks it, the plows do the best they can, but it's, it does, it does scrape off a lot of the top, and it, you know, we're chasing it around again, and, so I'd come back in the spring and I'd make that application, and that should do us through the, uh, through the summer months.
Rob, it doesn't?
I'm sorry, if it doesn't. I'm pretty sure that it's... You mean if it doesn't hold up?
Right, what if the potholes develop?
Sir, can you, can you, can you grab a microphone and introduce yourself for...
I don't know.
Thank you.
Lee Privet, 26 Lake. What if the, uh, over the course of the summer or the winter, those potholes reoccur, and you're only gonna come down there twice a year, we're gonna have to live with that, you know, till, um, say the springtime?
Well, I think that's the goal. I think that what we're talking about, how expensive it is to manage that street, so we're trying to find everything in the world we can, unless you, unless you'll let us come in and pave it.
I know that, um, asphalt material you put down in front of my house, oh, back in November, I believe.
Yeah.
The stuff held up well for, I'd say, a couple months, but then after we get some rain and, um, some snow and some cold, the stuff is all, there's major potholes back there again.
There is. It's, and I'll tell you why, is because we did a half-expectation type application, we come in, and I think we spent four hours in there, so we graded up some of this, remember I was explaining before, what we did, we have, there's a lot of leaves in that street, those leaves compost, and then what it does is it contaminates the structure of the gravel. So we tried to sweep that end, we tried to, then we take it up, we threw it in the back of a truck, and we worked the day before. Then when we came out, we put it through a paving machine, and it has the color of the paving, you know, it's, it's, it's a reclamation asphalt, it just doesn't have the emulsion, and it's dried out, but, and it looks like we were paving the street. But, uh, we didn't do this kind of application, and even to go a little further what you're saying, I don't have any, uh, faith that it's gonna last a long time, you know? It's, all I'm saying is, when a pothole fills, we can come, come back and put that skin on it. It's not a cultured gravel, it's all the same thing, straight across, so, I'm not putting my name on this, I, you know, I'm hearing from...
Yeah, but that would be wasting money as well. I mean, you, you say that you only put like, well, you put like 15 grand a year into Lake Street, and if you have to keep going back after you spend all the money to do this particular, um, application, you're gonna be spending more money again.
May I, Bob?
Sure.
Um, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I, you know, I've unfortunately learned more than I want to know, I guess, about this. Um, but I've spent a lot of time with Bob trying to understand it, 'cause there's a, sort of an English version of all this that maybe I can make a little, make a little sense out of it. The process that we're proposing is, we have not done before. It has never been done on Lake Street. We have never dug up six inches down on the existing grade to create a subsurface that would be hardened and be able to sustain a coat above it and last longer. We've never done that. It has been done in other towns, it's been done in Franklin, uh, locally, and it's been done a lot in Connecticut. And it has a track record. Um, and the track record, we've looked at, and when we look at the financials of the cost of doing that and take it out over the track record, it makes financial sense that it's a viable option. We did look at all of that. Um, can I, you know, I've never done it either, right? But it, it's not something that's never been done, it's not an experiment, uh, it's widely used, we just personally have never used it here, and we've never done it on Lake Street. So it's, it, you can't compare it to what has been done or what Bob started to do, 'cause they're apples and pears, they're, they're not at all alike. We're, we're trying to find a compromise. We, we heard, I heard, and, you know, Bob heard something else and Jack something else, but I heard you don't want the street widened, I, is, we all agree with that, right? We don't want the street widened, and I heard a majority say they don't want it all paved. Now, if, if the, the financially best decision from the town's perspective is to put a single surface of tar on that road, and it would maintain nine to 11 years, I think is what you said, somewhere in that range...
What, this, uh, grading applica?
No, the, the, binder coat.
Not, yeah, longer.
Yeah, and, and it's the most economical decision, but we heard that, and you guys live there, we heard a lot of folks say that you want to retain some of the natural element to the road, but we need to do it in a way that, you know, we talk about public safety, we talked a lot about that, and we've talked to our public safety officials. The road in its current condition is a public safety risk, and, um, we, we can't let it stay that way. Uh, you know, we understand the issue of concerns of speed and children, but children live on every road in the town of Norfolk, you know, and every other road is paved. And so we have, you, you can't lean on that side of the coin and say that it's the only risk we have, 'cause it's not fair. Um, so we have to look at something, people swerve to avoid those potholes, uh, if you talk to our public safety people, they say that road's a hazard, and it's a hazard to someone walking on it or, or going out for a walk with a dog or something, and someone coming down that street and waving, weaving around a pothole or falling in a pothole, talk to the buses, a nightmare for them.
I'm gonna go less than 40 miles an hour.
Uh, that would help on every road, sir, okay? I mean, that, that would help on every road.
I've been more than 50 miles an hour than five years ago.
Can, can, if you want to speak, please just give your name and address so that folks at home know.
I'm Peter Agarcola, 32 Lake Street. First of all, make your, to your comment, Mike, I do 20 miles an hour on that road consistently since the time you came and confronted me, all right? Second of all, the buses do fly, right? And, and goes back to what, one of the things you said before, we're getting off-topic, but on-topic. The bus comes over that, that, that blind hill in the morning, which is right before, right before the Zecconi's house, and I, I cringe, 'cause I'm just waiting for, I'm waiting for somebody to be coming the other way who doesn't understand that somebody's coming up, flying up that road. Uh, but you brought, uh, the more interesting, interesting point you brought up was, so they're doing this in other towns, can you send us to those roads? I mean, can you give us an address of where those roads are? I'd love to, I'd love to see them, and, I, I'm sorry, it's Bob, and I'd lo, I'd love to see what, what the surface looks like if you, these got, you know, I'm a sales guy, so if they've got a sales brochure, I'd love to see what that, what that looks like, but I'd love to see what it looks like in other towns. Give me, I, you know, how, what is, you know, what is, what is their, what has been their track record as far as in Franklin and in Connecticut and stuff like that? Have they, have they, again, to Lee's point, has it lasted? Those are things, those, these are all important questions, I think you have to ask. Clearly, I'm against paving, but, by the same token, I know there's economic elements involved, but you've got to have, we got to have, we have to have some comparison to, uh, to look at before you can even make a decision.
Well, uh, Bob, if Bob can provide that, that'd be great. We're all for it.
I'm sure he can, that's the question I'm asking.
I just need to, you know, this may not be a popular statement, but, but we have to, we have only really two options before us. to, we have only really two options before us. We, we have to do one or the other. Because leaving its status quo is not an option. It's, it's just not. It's not acceptable to our public safety folks. I, it's just, it doesn't work. And so we're trying to find that compromise and, and, you know, Bob favors paving it. I'm, I lean towards the compromise where we, we keep the, the local area because a lot of you wanted that. I heard a strong view of that, but maybe I, I heard wrong. But we, we have to do something. Mr. McCormick?
I'm from 51 Lake Street. Bob, Bob, I have a question, you, you, about where it's going to be paved and where it might be gravelled. Can you give us any more further description on that?
We have a picture of that. It, it's 500, it starts up at Medway Branch, or Medway, and it's 540 feet. And it's the part where, and we've talked with Conservation on this, just so you know. And they're in agreement that we, we have to do something to stop the erosion that's coming off the top of that road.
It's before your house, but not much...
Yeah, going down there, I'd say, stopping short of that telephone pole on the right somewhere.
Could you, would it be possible to point it out for us, Bob?
Sure.
Is this it even?
Yeah, that's, that's heading...
That's the one I was just looking at. That's your driveway?
Yeah.
Well, that's the telephone pole, yeah.
It's our way. It's towards us.
So this is Medway Street. If we go down here, and I'm thinking that if we control the water coming down here, we get some banking, so it'll sheet off here, then we'll get the lion's share of water to go off into the woods. Going into the woods, it filters and it's naturally filtered.
Well, then it's going to...
Exact, right.
But how far down, could you point where the asphalt would end?
Right around here.
I don't because I can't connect the internet.
That's a guess, no. If I'm within 20 feet, it could be up here even. You know, I'll do a little engineering to find out, you know, where exactly it would end, but...
And what about the other end, Bob?
There's already existing pavement here, and it ends at like number 18 or 16 or something like that. I wouldn't go any further than that.
We're thinking it's existing.
Yeah, it's 1,252 feet, and it's, it's the part that is currently paved.
Jim, move.
Yes, ma'am.
I ripped out...
Oh, sir, I'm sorry.
I mean, you know what you mean.
That really was a dumb thing to say, wasn't it? I'm sorry. I apologize. I only saw the top. And I was jealous.
And I can understand how the people at that end don't want the pavement to go far, but I, I'm not speaking for Rich or Lee. Some of us would like the pavement on our end to go further.
Yep.
And, you know, to the extent that we don't want you to slot the pavement where it's now, we want you to bring it past 60. Like, Lee, don't get mad. I'd like you to bring it down to 22.
No.
Because in all seriousness, that's where, right there, that's where the worst potholes of all streets are.
Well, you know, you present an interesting question. I mean, are you going to the same place I was?
Why not pave the whole thing, then?
Well...
Well, okay, but I, I can understand, I appreciate the other people's opinion that they don't want in front of their house paved. I'm saying...
I understand the...
You can pave the main driveway and hopefully the slightest...
And you're at 22, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
This is down in 50 Lake Street. I'm in the middle. So all the people that take a left, going out of their driveway, avoid all their pockets. They can blow up that out. You're going to pave to the McCormick's and leave me in the middle. All my car bills and all my damage. And lots of saying they're not going to come down the street and they brought up a pool with my kids' number. It is happening. I don't care how slow they go, I just...
Jim?
Rob?
So I think, I think if people had thought stone rock road versus paving, rock road held this appeal, but hearing that we can't keep up with doing this rock road thing, it's just not viable because we can't get to it enough to make it a decent road, and then we can't justify the, the danger that it poses to the people and the vehicles and sending a $250,000, you know, fire truck down there that bounces around and gets in trouble. So, so it looks like if you reorient yourself to either this milling material or the paving, to me, I'm, I'm the squeeze a nickel till it screams kind of guy, the milling material is actually more expensive, and it's got the more expensive outlife on, on, on its maintenance. And knowing that, you know, I love our town, I love our DPW, and they're very good, they're not going to be able to keep up to it the way it ideally would be, you know, when the guy who's selling it sells it. So you're trading more, it seems to me with the milling, you're trading more trouble for more cost even in the upfront. We've got a problem with the hill, we got a topography problem, and we got a public safety issue on the speed. Although I think unfortunately, there are just streets where that happens, and it continues to happen. It's something that we have to work on and try to make people more responsible. But the more I hear from the crowd, the more I'm hearing, let's just fix this thing and move on.
Mr. Garrity's right. I mean, the right, the right answer is to pave it. That's the most economical answer. It solves the problem the longest. It's, it's the right answer. But we don't live on that road. You folks do. And so we're, we're trying to find some common ground that, that, and maybe we can't. Maybe that's just unfortunately where we are.
But...
Yes, you had a question.
John Stamaris, 27 Lake Street. I'm in favor for continuing the paving from Main Street right to my house. And that's the way I am. I don't like the material you put down. It's, it's a mess. It looks like a disaster. In this present day, it's a disaster. It's, the plows came by and it spread it two, three feet from the street. It's all over the front of the yards. I mean, it's, it's, I don't, I wouldn't want that. I'd rather have you take that up, just put regular pavement down. We don't need to go extra fancy. I mean, it's, it's a street.
Others?
I think, what about the...
Can you grab the microphone, sir? I apologize for that. This is for folks at home, not, not for us. We hear you, but it's for folks at home.
I'm Rich Zecconi at 30 Lake Street. If we went with the paving and tried to come with some compromise, it will make the paving more appealing to the people that don't wish to have it. Possibly paving is going to create the water to move a little faster, so maybe back up the paving with crushed stone rather than a gravelled material, which will allow the water to slow down before it goes into the pond or the lake.
Oh, and the signs?
Possibly coat the asphalt with a Portland-type cement, dry mix, and it creates like a grayish color to it, so it's not a black asphalt look. It's fairly inexpensive. Done immediately after the road is paved. Basically come down with like lime spreader, handheld and spread Portland cement on the road, and it settles into all the little bruises. You still have an asphalt surface, and it doesn't have the, the dark black look to it.
Or even a, even the stone seal.
Yeah.
Immediately.
Anything like that. I'm in construction. The gravel road's not going to hold up. The contours of that entire road would have to be changed to make it work, no matter what you do, and it's hard to stay keeping the grading the way it is.
We know that.
Plots are just going to tear it up. It's unavoidable. And there are a lot of pockets in too many places. So maybe lean towards the asphalt, but try and compromise with everybody. And in the summertime, there's no reason why a couple of us couldn't get together with maybe temporary speed bumps. They make them, they're plastic, you slide them out. At one time, the neighbors can be responsible to pull them in. You know, it'd be a simple solution.
I'm, 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 I'm loving everything I hear.
Others?
I think we have to compromise with everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
Tara Worlock, 25 Lake Street. I guess my concern is from the last meeting, Mr. Wendleton was here talking about the concerns of the Concom. And my frontage has all wetlands. And he said that a berm should be built there. You know, I don't hear that coming in because I'm getting all the runoff into the wetlands that probably feeds my well, probably feeds a lot of the wells on the street, but I don't hear that being addressed. It sounds like it hasn't been said, but I think we're probably going to end up being asphalted. And my concern is, I don't want to pollute my well. I don't want to pollute somebody else's well. I don't want the wetlands to be, you know, contaminated to the extent that they're not usable. And I haven't heard that addressed at all.
We, we have, we're not talking about it here because it isn't a privilege of this board.
Right.
But we have talked about it with Conservation, and, and there are issues that we have to deal with on that. You're right.
And Bob, they have jurisdiction. You're going to have to go in front of Concom and make them happy, right?
Yep. Others? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Leon, members of the board, fellow neighbors. I'll try to be less passionate tonight, check myself. I'd like to address, first of all, Mr. Leon, what you referenced when you opened this meeting, acknowledging that Lake Street is in fact one of the most unusual streets in this town. It is a treasure. I would like to think we all felt that way when we purchased our homes, and would like to maintain that treasure. The second thing that you've broached, which I think frankly is the most important, safety. I would like to specifically hear what our public safety officials have identified as the primary concerns, to see if, you know, that, that's consistent with what I'm thinking they are. And I'm thinking, if they are what I think they are, and you take a road of the same width with the hill, with the curve in front of our house, no drainage, when it gets slick, that, the, the, the water will pool, I would think that it would border on criminal conduct to put a pavement down on a road that width without addressing drainage, without addressing elevations. And I shudder to think what would happen. And I can speak personally for myself, and I'm a very slow driver. I don't think anyone has a problem with me. There have been many instances I have encountered on your hill, a vehicle coming over the top having no expectation that I was there because of the conditions of the road, because you cannot, well, I shouldn't say you can't, you can't speed, you certainly can, and many, many vehicles do. I shudder to think what is going to happen. If you don't, number one, do drainage. Number two, if you're going to asphalt, you've got to do it right. You can't put a berm, a binder coat down. That's not going to last. Then you have to do drainage. It's going to ruin the road. If that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be. I think it would be an absolute shame to do that. I truly do. And I think from a safety point of view, as I say, I think it borders on criminal to do that. And the other thing I think that you forget is certainly other streets in town, everyone has children, everyone has safety concerns, cars drive too fast. We have some very natural resources, some attractive nuisances, if you will, that attract many more than the children of our neighborhood to that street. People come from all over that end of town to our street. It's not restricted to the few number of residents there. And you're exposing a lot more people than you think to a lot more danger to do this. I frankly believe that the binder being suggested is worth a try to maintain the integrity, the look, the resources, without widening it into a thoroughfare or a typical residential street. And I would ask you to explore that, encourage you to do that. But I will close by asking, what are those specific, what have they identified as the primary safety concerns? And how can they possibly rationalize that slapping down asphalt on top of that service can in any way make it better? Thank you for your attention.
Okay. I'll answer, but others, comments? Yes, sir.
I just want to state the obvious. The speed limit's posted. If you're speeding, it's against the law, and you can get a ticket. That's it. Put up a camera. If your neighbor's speeding or whatever, but it's, it's the law. It's posted 20 miles an hour, and that's it. Every other street has the same sign, speed limit. It's the police's jurisdiction to provide law enforcement to make them go slow. That's it. Same as any other street.
Yes, ma'am. Grab a microphone. Grab a microphone, so folks at home can hear you.
We had a fire in the house behind me, the Woodman House, and for fire trucks to come down there and get there on time, especially not having hydrants, and get up that driveway and down the street, I think that's a bigger issue. That's my thoughts. And they took some of my property.
Others? Okay, Rob, did you...
Well, you know, in, in conversations with the chiefs, Mrs. McCormick, I feel your pain. And, but we, we are a town of 17-foot streets with big trees in the right of ways. You'll note, if you, if you drive down Fruit Street, when you take by the Tripp House, when you take that 49-degree turn, it's pay, it's unpaved for a certain spot because we couldn't pave it in good conscience without taking down enormous trees that the neighbors really would not want to see come down. So we just basically passed it by. We've got to make these choices all over the place. If we were to do Lake Street properly, you would not want to live there anymore. We would be taking all the trees off the side of the road. We'd be making it 18 to 21 feet wide, putting in a sidewalk, and it would completely destroy the character of the road. We're trying to pursue a middle course because we can't continue the kind of, A, horrible surface, and B, kind of outrageous cost to do it right. So it hasn't been done right for years. I mean, you all know that. That, that street has gotten rutted and, and deep, deep potholes. And the, one of the safety concerns is when people do go down and they hit a pothole, you can spring in either direction. And you may spring into oncoming cars, you'll spring into the side. There's, we have schools on streets that are 17 feet wide, and there aren't places for kids to walk in it. So, you know, it's not, your problems are not entirely unique. What's unique is this surface. And unfortunately, it may be time to bring the street into the 20th century. I'm not saying the 21st yet because you can't get it there, but let's bring it into the 20th so that it is a, a street that's capable of handling, unfortunately, the wonderful SUVs we love to drive and things like that. You know, it's not, we've, we're far past the time of people driving 14 miles an hour now. Unfortunately, they drive a little faster than that, and that street can't take it. And it being in a lousy condition, as you all have said, hasn't really stopped them either. There's still, people are still speeding on the street. So...
10 miles an hour is too fast. It is.
And, and I just, I do want to say though, I don't see milling as a temporary, let's see if this works, because that's, we're talking about, that, that is $130,000 solution. The binder solution, the paving solution, is less than that, is $115. So I can't in good conscience support spending six figures on a solution to see if it works, particularly with the way the budgets are.
So, Peter Agarco, 30 Lake Street. So...
Grab a mic, grab a microphone.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I usually...
It's for the folks at home on cable.
No, I don't, I'm just kidding. I coached your grandson. You know, you know him.
I do know that.
So last week we were here, last time we were here, you said it was $5,000 to $10,000 per year.
Maintenance, those are maintenance costs.
Maintenance costs, okay. So it's increased by almost a factor of three.
No, no, no.
That's materials. Now we're talking about labor as well.
Let me explain. There are, there are multiple components to what we have to spend on that road. The number we were quoting you last week was materials, only materials. It's not labor, it's not the equipment, it's none of that. When you get into all of those costs, it's around 17, $18,000. The material component, we spend 20% of our entire material budget on Lake Street.
Right.
Just the materials.
So, so, okay, point noted. So if we start to do an ROI on this, right? If you look at this and you're saying, we're going to spend $150,000 or $125,000, I don't going to spend $150,000 or $125,000, I don't know of any budget, I don't know of any projects that ever come in on budget, you're talking about a 10-year payback on a surface that's going to last for 10 years. So your economic argument, the economic argument starts to, seems to fall apart a little bit here. If I'm making, if I'm making an investment and I'm looking for a 10-year payback or even a nine-year payback, I'm not doing it, right? I don't think anybody in this room is doing that. And again, if you start talking about time, value, money, that's here too. Again, I'm not an economic, economic here, but you get, again, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a huge economic impact that you're talking about here. You're talking about two projects that are well over $100,000, and the payback on them is at a minimum, if my math is correct, is at least eight years for a surface that's going to last, we think, 11 years. And I, you know, I candidly, I'm candidly having a hard time buying that. Either one of these alternatives does not seem to ease the economic, you know, impact that you guys are talking about. If I'm wrong, you know, correct me, but there's at least an eight-year payback.
Yeah, it's actually between a five and a six-year payback. We have done the numbers on it. And there are multiple, in fairness, we haven't, it's hard to share all the pricing components of this because there are multiple components to it. You know, we have, I think, six, eight people in DPW. So we have to look at the, what we weigh this financially, we look at when they're on Lake Street, where they're not. And we have to weigh that. You know, it's the use of personnel, all of those things go into the way we look at our return when we try to figure out how best to spend your money. And the payback on this is between five and six years. But there are other paybacks to it that we have to consider. We do have the drainage issues, and we have to address some of those. We clearly have to address it off of Medway, no question, because it's just, conservation really doesn't want it any other way, and they're right. So we, there are things we have to do that are a component of the costing when we look at that street. So what we're really looking at is the 2,400 square feet. That's really the issue. And when you look at that in terms of return on investment, it actually gets down to three to four years because we're going to have to fix the upper part, we're going to have to repair the lower part. So now we're dealing with only that middle section as to what we do or we don't do. So the cost component, when you talk about return on investment, that's the expense, and that's where the savings come in, and that's where the number gets down in three to four years. And I can give you the detail on it if you want, but we have looked at that. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Rob, I'll get you next.
David Sherwood, Five Lake Street, a couple of questions. When you talk about asphalt, how far down do you go in prep? I mean, you talked about how far you go in that composite binder material. How far down do you go for asphalt?
I'd probably take a look at shaving off about six inches of that material. I got to believe it's getting pretty decent once it gets down to that elevation.
Okay. And with the composite or the binder, how far down are they going?
So the health, the thickness of the binder?
How far down are they going to scrape before they put the binder in?
Well, that's what I said, about six inches, if I would guess.
That's all.
No, in other words, I go up to, would take the street right now and would get a, put a grader right on it right now, something big enough, a road machine that would penetrate the compaction that's already there. Did scrape, just like we did, but on a larger scale, scrape everything together, form it, profile it to some degree, and probably before that, would do all the engineering on this. I wouldn't just go out and snap a center line and try to pave the street. I'd take care of Mrs. McCormick's concern before you even mentioned that. You got to take care of the water, even with asphalt. So I'm talking about little shoulders on the side, and that's why I mentioned side slopes. In this price here, I've calculated in some side sloping and some drainage, all drainage being natural, if I can find the widths. So if you look at, I mean, you don't have to put the pictures back on, if you look at some of these pictures, you'll see that there are some stone walls that are almost like, up like a trophy. I'd like to, the road is actually going to come in less than what you have there right now. If I could paint it on that, you'd see it. So I'd like to take it from the...
Maybe even get up.
These are some difficult challenges, but when I, when we're talking about maybe moving some trees, these little twigs right here are going to be tomorrow's big trees. They got to go. So if the pavement comes out to about here, I'm looking at doing some kind of swale depending on what the engineers are. I'm just talking right now, but you're definitely going to take care of the water. And the water will then get filtered out as part of the stormwater management so that by the time it gets into our aquifers and so forth, it's filtered out of all the sedimentation. But then to take this back up to, this is not a great picture here either, but there are some stone walls there. And I'd like to talk to some of the people that own these stone walls, if they're starting the layout, and find out what your attachment is to these, because maybe you think it's untouched, it'd be good, and maybe we roll them down the hill, prep the ground for it, and put those stone walls back. And then, and then even then, even leave it if you want, and then maybe put a stone wall along here. But there's a whole bunch of things that I would do by talking to the people that have the frontage there. I wouldn't just come in with bulldozers and grade it all out.
I think, Bob, what was being asked was binder versus millings. Do you go the same depths on both of them? Compare the two processes.
Pretty much.
So it's about the same depth now?
No, no, I'm sorry. The binder would only be about two and a half, three inches thick.
How far down you go before you put the binder on? Because then you're going to do crush stone.
How deep would you prepare the base to grade with the binder?
Well, the subbase... More of my question. Which process takes it down the deepest, is my question?
Well, if, let me answer it.
Not for the finish, but for the prep.
For the prep, the deepest one would be the reclamation, in every case, everywhere you go. So if we were to reclaim it, we'd use some of that material and put it back.
Would you, but you don't have to, to be clear, you don't have to reclaim it for when you put the asphalt on. Is that what you...
No. We could, I mean, we could.
In my opinion, from a reclamation, the deeper you go, because on my, I've been here 30 years, and I still get boulders frostheaving up.
On Lake Street?
Yep. No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about my personal prop, my work walks, and I still see that. The deeper you go, it would be my thinking, the better your foundation, the longer you're going to last. If that's the case, you could always come back five, six, seven years later, now you've had an established base, now you can asphalt. So you haven't lost your investment by going with a composite. That's my opinion.
No, you're right, but I didn't, I could, I'd have to calculate that into the cost. I mean, a lot of times...
And understand.
You're right. To me, reclamation is the best. If I could reclaim half the streets in the town, that's where I'd go, but it's, it's not, you know, I do a quarter of a street a year.
I think we're talking different things, though.
Millings option.
Or I'm missing it. You're...
It isn't milling's option.
If I can, sir? I think what you're saying is, is that if we dig down to put this option two in place, where we keep it somewhat natural, we've gone down, we go deeper for that option than we do if we just put on a single coat of paving. And that, your point, I think, was, is that if we do that process at some point in the future, if option, this option isn't as effective as we think it is, that a lot of the work has been done to provide the subbase to pave it at that point in time.
Absolutely.
But the only argument I'd have to say against that is that that option, the re, the natural option, is a more expensive option from day one for us. And then the paving is an added cost onto that, so you've probably spent at least 50% more with that solution if, if in fact you did it to be, than you, if you did it...
And that's the wild card, not knowing how long that binder material is going to last. Because my feeling is...
We only know what we've been told. You're right.
You know, my feeling is, you know, I own the three really big potholes as you head out to Main Street. Those are right in front of my house. As fast as you fill them, they're going to open up.
Right.
Because that ground is constantly thawing, freezing.
Right, but there's a, there's a reason for that. And this one I did get a good understanding of, is that as long as we do what we're going to do, you cannot fill those potholes. You can't. Every time it rains, they're going to flow out, and there's nothing you can do about it. If we do the reclamation, that will not occur. He can go back and fill it, and it will stay. It will remain in place, and it won't fall out as it does currently. And he can give you a much more sophisticated answer on that than I can, but...
The thing you have to understand, the millings, all right, is going to pothole. You're still going to get potholes out of the millings. The difference is, because it's a more uniform material than just a bunch of rocks, we can fill them in better. But you're still going to get potholes with the milling. So there's not going to be this reduced, a exceptionally reduced cost for the upkeep of the milling. There's still going to be a cost to upkeep the milling that's higher than the binder course.
Correct.
So there's more maintenance in a year-by-year basis on the milling than there are, than there is by doing paving.
That is correct.
So that's something you do have to understand. And all good intentions aside, you know, the potholes, we're not going to be every day, you know, in the spring and in the early winter, out there filling the potholes. So you're going to be living with potholes, and lord knows what, you know, they look like.
Once the potholes are left, they're going to just deteriorate the rest of the road. So it turns into the same thing we have now, except we spent $130,000.
It'll happen less frequently, but it will still happen. Can you grab the microphone now? Apologize for that. Yes, ma'am.
Can I just say quickly, just in your calculations, I just want to add one more column comparing the pavement or the other mill product, which is more expensive, and you're going to have to pay to maintain every year. You're missing one other column if you use the mill product, it's quality of life. It's terrible. It's terrible to drive on. It's terrible to have it in front of your house. It's a mess. It's just one column. It's not a number, but it means a lot to me. It's quality of life. I don't want to live with that in front of my house. I'd rather have you pave it. That's my opinion.
My question's with Dave Sherwood. Are you talking about the paved part of the road?
No, I'm talking about where they're going to put in that...
The dirt, the dirt part, okay. Because you were saying the potholes were in front of your house.
Oh, yeah. What I'm saying, what I meant by...
Good decision. What I meant by that was, as long as you don't go down far enough, you're always going to have those heaves. And I think the further you go, the more stable your ground's going to become.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, even with asphalt, and since you're going down, not quite as deep, don't you think we're still going to have potholes with the asphalt? I don't see the asphalt as a cure-all, honestly, because look at the other end of Lake Street towards Main, we have potholes there. So, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't see asphalt as the end-all for the potholes.
Yeah, I hope you don't think I'm a wise guy when I say this, but it is. It seriously is. If there's a pothole, I can go out and fix it in two days, and then it's done. And I'm probably, you're not probably going to see us for three years, and maybe six years before you even see a pothole. And I only recommended a binder without a top course, because a top course is a more dense material, and it doesn't, and it cheats water better, it doesn't pass water, because I thought binder was a little bit more aesthetic to the gravel. But if you want to, you know, do it right and have some more insurance, best application that I know of, reclaim the street like that gentleman said, shave it down to the proper grade, put two and a half inches, three inches of binder down, and an inch and a half of top on. But now I'm starting to scare people because, whoa, we're talking 60 miles an hour now. My mind doesn't work like that, it's, but...
Another question, if you do the paving, what do you do with the driveway's spotty aprons? Is it going to be a high lip or a low lip?
No, that's why I thought the question was pretty academic. What do you prepare for a binder? And it's just, if the binder's two and a half inches, then I'm going to go two and a half inches lower than your driveway aprons, because you need to make, make smooth transition, with the exception of a banking or a crown or something like that. But once you're approaching your driveway, it'll be a comfortable drive-in. I'm not going to take this on myself. I've built a lot of roads and stuff, but I'm, I want to have an engineer draw a picture, and we can work through, work along this whole process and involve everybody that wants to. I'll have workshops if you want, come to the DPW, I'll have it laid out, just to your total satisfaction, because we'll only be doing it once. It'll be worth it.
Is what you're thinking about similar to what we did up on Nagatuck?
No.
No. That's the full, that's the full Monty, that's with the, that's got the top coat on it.
Well, Fruit Street was a reclamation.
Okay.
Plaza Secor was. The Indian streets weren't. That was a risk application, like Woodman Street.
Is there anything that they could see in town that is similar to what you're talking about?
The last stretch of Secor Street going into...
Into Medway?
Into Medway.
Medfield.
Medfield. And most of Noon Hill. There's no top coat on it. Now, I don't agree with that. That's the way I inherited it, and, you know, it's, but it's an expense to put that on, and it's been holding up, and you control water, and you don't have a lot of traffic, you can get a lot more life out of it. And I just figured the binder on a street with that volume of vehicles, it'll just last a lot longer.
Others? Yes, ma'am.
I guess, again, I want to know what's going to happen with this water if it gets blacktopped, because obviously the lower areas are, is where the water's going to pool. That's where a lot of the potholes are. At the end of my driveway, there's a bunch of potholes. At the wetlands by the pond, in front of the lake, in front of the McCormicks, where you go down a dip, that's where all the potholes are. If you blacktop over that, you can't have the water running off into the wetlands. If you have a berm, it's still just going to pool there. Where's the drainage going to go? We're not going to have sewers, we're not going to have, you know, sumps or something for this water to go into. Where is it going to go? I'm at the lowest point.
Yeah.
And the wetlands are at the lowest point.
What I'm, what we're going to try to do, like I said, I haven't done a profile on this road, but where the water comes off the street, you want to have a bit of a shoulder. That's why I'm talking about, I put some money into side slopes. The drainage investment we're talking about is when that water comes off the asphalt, that'll go into what Rich was saying, into either a grass whale, where it will, eventually it'll go into the wetland.
Wetlands on both sides.
If you didn't think it was going to go on the wetlands, then, I mean, it has to go on the wetlands. It's like every street...
Right now it just drops off because it's a culvert. It's like, so you're going to have to fill in wetlands to get a grass...
It'll go into the wetlands, but it'll go through the filtering process first, so it'll...
But you're going to have to widen then.
Very little.
There's no...
Again, it'll, you'll see it before we do it, and then, you know, of course, it's going to go in the wetlands. You know, like most streets, it goes into the wetlands. It's just the way it is.
But it's not asphalt.
But asphalt won't come up, though, so you're not going to be drawing things in.
But doesn't asphalt have arsenic in it? I mean, isn't that what leaches out of asphalt?
Can I suggest that?
Is that what, is this what Concom, Concom says about asphalt?
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's all the things that we take out of our catch base, and we test them for VOCs, and we have a BUD, which is a better use determination. It's, believe it or not, that stuff grows grass faster than aluminum, but it's not something you want to have on your front lawn, because it does have that stuff in it. So we need to segregate that stuff, and it gets a site assignment where we can put it and stuff. Sorry about that, Rob.
Bob, best-case scenario, when would you start work?
My first project going into the spring.
Right, but that's not, we're talking April, May, to be sure we're past storms. How would you feel about taking a Saturday and walking the street, and if people want to come and see what you're planning to do, you know, you can, and maybe we have a Concom member there to walk through, you know, before we get too far with, you know, starting to cut things up and chop things up, do you...
Sure. This is my thing. I like it.
Do folks feel like you'd be interested in that?
If it had a police detail, the whole end is going to be all...
Well, we might, you know, we might do that.
We could do that, too. Yes, sir.
I have a question, just to follow up. You just mentioned that town officials have some safety concerns about the road as they are. I think the question was asked, what are they? And we haven't got an answer. I'd love to know what safety concerns that our town officials, chief of police, fire chief, have expressed on that. And how does asphalt in that road address those?
The two major concerns, and one isn't addressed by asphalt, is just the width of the road itself. I think if you were to ask both the police chief and the fire chief, they would tell you that, and we have other roads, by the way, that are the same width, believe it or not, as Lake Street. They're very concerned about any road that's narrow. A road that you may not believe, but Grove Street, if there's a truck coming down Grove Street, a Federal Express truck, you know, just a van-type truck, you have to pull off to the side to let it go by. There's nothing, you know, so that's the major concern, and asphalt does not solve that.
So, so the safety concerns that you've expressed a minute ago...
That was one. There are two other concerns.
About, but for the first one, the asphalt does nothing to address.
Agreed. Agreed.
The milling would do nothing to address, and keeping it the way it is does nothing to address. Now, what's the second safety concern?
The potholes. The potholes and the condition of the road. Both the fire chief and the police chief feel strongly that that is a hazard and presents a risk not only to drivers, but to anyone that's walking along the side of the road. It's definitely a risk to our public safety officials. If you were to talk to the school bus authorities, they'd tell you the same thing.
Maybe the school bus authorities, Peter said, should slow down, because they ran me off the road about two weeks ago.
I, this, I'm not going to debate that with you, Mr. McCormick, but I am telling you, I know you feel strongly about one particular way, but it, there's no question that the condition of the road, in the view of the public safety officials, and you're very free to talk to them, the condition of the road currently is a major safety concern to the public safety officials. And even if it were equal, and let's just make that statement, let's just say that, let's take the public safety issue off the table. In terms of the town and the use of our resources, the current status doesn't work. We cannot continue to do this. We pay, and I say it again, we spend a disproportionate share maintaining that road. Now, we could ignore it, and then it's going to get 10 times worse. And we can't ignore it. We own it. So that issue, you know, that is a significant issue to us. And we have been stuck in the middle on this for some time, as you well know, you know, and you can hear it here. There are people that are very, have very strong views on one side, and there are folks that have very strong views on the other, and we're stuck in the middle. And these poor folks, when they go down to fix it, can't win. And it's been going on for too long. It's just not fair. It's not fair to you folks. It's not fair to these people that have to do the work. And quite frankly, it's not fair to the other 9,900 people either, who we are spending a disproportionate share of our money on a road because residents won't allow us to do what should be done to the road. It's not fair. And we have to weigh that.
Well, just so silence isn't construed as agreement, I don't think it's fair to put asphalt down this road as it is now, the way it's being talked about. So if we're talking about fairness, some other people in this room pay taxes, too. And I, for one, pay taxes for most of this town that I've never used. So you want to talk about fairness, we can talk about numbers. I'll talk about numbers with anybody. But, so I don't like the fairness argument. What we're talking about is everybody on Lake Street knew what the street was when they moved there. It is a safety concern, Jim. That's the biggest problem we have. The safety concerns about people walking on Lake Street with potholes, I think, are a little bit different than the safety concerns of some kids or some motorists. I mean, do you see how close some of those trees are? Have you seen the cars spin out on the curves? I don't expect you have, because you don't live there. But I think that, if we balance fairness, is what I'm talking about. But thanks.
Aren't cars more likely to spin out on looser surfaces? And I don't think you're recommending we go in and widen Lake, are you? Because the trees are going to be there, one way or the other. Well, you raised the point, counselor. It's, you know...
No, so to answer you, no, you don't, you can't widen the road.
Okay.
Okay?
And...
But what you do, Rob, what you do is if you asphalt it, you increase the speed. That's what we're all talking about. And we know it's not perfect, and we know it stinks, and we know it's expensive.
But we're hearing from...
But you're going to increase the speed, is what...
We're hearing from everybody that people go fast on it anyway. So either we knowingly let them go fast on a road which is a piece of crap, which is dangerous, has a bad surface which you can slide a car on, or we tighten up the surface so it's more navigable, and, you know, hopefully, bit by bit, get out there and change people's minds again on the speed. I like the temporary speed bump idea, particularly if they don't know it's coming, you know, random days. And, you know, if you guys are willing, maybe we can park a cruiser up on, you know, in your driveway every once in a while, every, you know, six weeks or something. I mean, I can't speak for Chuck. He's probably going to call me up right now and say, "What the heck are you talking about?" But...
The old vehicle suspensions won't be able to stand the potholes, so we can't send it down there. Yes, sir.
Jim, Rick Moore, 35 Lake Street. I don't know where the majority lies here.
Neither do I.
And I know how I feel, and Nancy, my wife feels, and our immediate neighbors. We would like to see it taken care of. I think that we're spending so much time on the intricacies of the engineering process, something that's far above me with understanding. And I think that we should just get down to letting you take care of the engineering and try to determine which look we like better, either the asphalting or the other alternative. And that's how far it is above me. I don't even remember what it is. But I'd like to see us go in that direction. Because I think that the safety issue can be dealt with with these speed bumps. Or we could put in permanent speed bumps if we wanted to, or one, or two.
I don't know how they work with plowing, but...
Yeah, those we have trouble with class.
But clearly, you can put in temporary speed bumps.
But there, again, that's an engineering issue that is beyond me. So that's my...
Well, I'm not sure where to go with this. We can't allow it to go on forever. We have... It is a public way. It is the town's property, and we have an obligation to do something. Mr. McCormick is correct. I mean, there's a charm and a character to that road that is unique. And we're trying to find some way to preserve that and not take it away. I completely agree. There's a wonderful charm to that. I, you know, I'm naive at times in that I like to believe we can come to consensus. It's just my nature to try. But this obviously isn't going to happen. Because it is a community, and it should be a majority, you know? That's democracy. You people should have a say in what takes place and where you live. But we are in somewhat of a dilemma here, because we have to do something. And I hear the public safety concerns. I certainly would not in any way demean them. But there are ways we can deal with them. There are. And we can convene the right people to find solutions to that. Because status quo isn't going to work. It just isn't. That option is not on the table for us. We cannot continue to do this. So is it possible to get a general feel from you as to what options you want? Sir, you were going to say something. I apologize.
Jay Liondecker, 20 Lake Street. You've certainly collected lots of opinion, and I think we've all learned a lot in this process. I would say invest the town's money under the street. Pick the surface that's maintainable and seems to make the most sense, but every dollar you spend under it in the base is more valuable than what we have on the surface from a long-term perspective. I think that's where we really are being most efficient, when we do it that way.
And I just want to pay a little bit of a compliment to Mr. McGee, since he's been on board with us, because he has an expertise in roads that predates Norfolk. And, you know, we get about $400,000 a year from the state to work on roads, and then we have some money in our own budget that we use. It doesn't touch the needs of the town, and it frustrates the heck out of us. But he has managed to use those dollars far more wisely and to reclaim some of the roads and to repair roads, and they're holding up longer than they used to. You just can't go fill a pothole. Doesn't work. And that's what we used to do. And so we're getting better at it, but we just don't have enough money to fix all the problems we have. Yes, sir.
Jim, can I just make a suggestion to follow up to you? I think we're all in, you know, what everyone's saying. We may disagree, but I think this is great that you've got us here and taking our input, not just doing something. So we thank you. Rob had said something about maybe a Saturday. I mean, I know a lot of our neighbors aren't here, and I wouldn't want to see a vote taken without everyone knowing, "Hey, I didn't know there was a vote going to be." If we could maybe take Rob up on his suggestion and to the people who could go out there, get a better idea from Bob and what exactly we can expect.
Sure.
And then maybe have a, you know, then everyone knows, "Hey, this is what we can expect, and we're going to vote on it at some time." Might I make that suggestion?
I think Rob's suggestion's a great idea. I think it would be beneficial to all of you to actually... Can you do it in English? To describe to you exactly and show you directly what impact it will or will not have on the road. I think that's a great idea. I'd be all for it. I went down the road today. I've gone down four or five times. I don't live there, but I've probably gone down it more in the last two months than I have in the last two years. So I took my wife's car. I didn't want to take mine.
Can I just say one thing to Bob? I hope he don't think I'm selfish in my next request, but I heard you're not going to do anything until April. I hope not. I mean, right now, today, it's impassable, today. I can't see waiting two more months. I mean, you're going to have to send a tow truck to get me out of the pit. I mean, really, it's unbearable.
We can go down there tomorrow. It's frost on the ground now.
Yeah, I understand. I'm not saying tonight, but you know...
No, tomorrow. I mean, we can go down tomorrow.
Thank you.
But again, just so you know, the next time we plow it, it's going to happen again. But I, loud and clear, because I was, I know Jim went down there, and I was down...
It's just the holes right now. I'm someone who almost the size of my car. It's crazy.
What Bob was referring to, when he talked about April, he was referring to the overall project, not maintenance. So, yes, yes, sir. I got it right this time.
One question and one point. My question is, what street in Franklin has the millings? So I could just...
Yeah, Jim mentioned that. I think we've actually learned that they took that up. So that's an old, old street that they, that was a temporary solution for them.
It wasn't too long ago, and from what I understand, they paved over it.
Okay. Well, the other question, too, is I wanted to make sure that, you know, maybe I wasn't passionate enough, because you were confused where I was coming from. I don't want to pave.
No, I got that.
And also, you can park a police cruiser at the end of my driveway. Anytime you want, you can put it there.
The milling solution is not financially, to your point, sir, it's not a financially wise decision.
Do we have to have...
It is a compromise. Let me finish for a minute. It was intended to be a compromise to try and provide those that have a passion for retaining the charm of the existing road in a way that would still work somewhat for us. But in terms of return on investment, no, doesn't work. The only one that really works is paving. You are correct in that analysis.
On the first, on the work, and then there's the ongoing maintenance, which that's when the paving becomes much more superior to the milling work, because even the milling work, you're out there every year with repairs, where the pavement, you go for a number of years.
It'll start to deteriorate, you know? It'll, it might deteriorate in six years. You know that, you know, there's going to be some, something like that. It could start at the shoulders, or it could start in potholes. But at least it's something we can repair, and, you know, you don't see us for a year, and it'll take us three hours to do it.
There's one other thing that we haven't talked about, because it's not really something we wanted to talk about. But can you put up that picture, Jack? You have, there are, you talk about public safety. We've had some folks look at this, but there's some issues along the tree. There are some issues with some of the trees that are along there. The roots have been exposed, and we've asked some people to take a look at that. They're going to come down. Now, not tomorrow, hopefully, but over time, they're going to come down, because they're getting compromised with the way it is now. And, you know, we're not suggesting to you that we're going to go out with a chainsaw and start taking... That's not what I mean by this. I'm just saying, for your own information, you need to know that you have some trees on that road, that one of these days are going to be on your road. Irrelevant of what we do to the road. They're going to be on that road. And it's not unique to, we have that problem. Rob talked about Fruit Street. The public meetings on that one weren't fun either. Yes, sir. Don't get the cable people angry.
Paul Young, 29 Lake Street. So I would ask you to set a date for that walkthrough on a Saturday morning.
Don't get the cable people angry.
Paul Young, 29 Lake Street. So I would ask you to set a date for that walkthrough. The little stone wall that you showed, it's an ugly little stone wall, but it's mine, and I would like to see what you're planning to do with it. The other thing, I'm getting a feeling that the general consensus here is for asphalt the whole way. I reckon if you took a vote, that's probably what you would get. So I would strongly urge you to go back and, when you do your calculations again, take into consideration some of Rick's suggestions about retaining some of the aesthetics of the road. Some of them are pretty good ideas.
We would agree. I think the weather forecast for this Saturday is not good. So I want to shoot for the following Saturday, if the weather allows. Does that work for you, Bob?
Yeah, can I just think about it a little bit? And then I'll get, I'll make sure I get something to everybody? So, yeah, so we do have favorable weather?
Oh, we want you to be prepared.
Yeah, and that, too.
All right. We have, is the communication process working okay with you folks? I mean, we're getting information out to you, all right? We'll schedule it as soon as we possibly can. We're not going to do anything until we do this and give everybody a chance to see and talk with Bob and get a feel for it, and we'll come to a decision.
Yeah, because I'm thinking like March or something like that.
March, oh, when the weather changes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yes, ma'am.
I wondered before any work whatsoever is undertaken, I would assume that there will be a formal layout showing the demarcation of the road, because I know, as a matter of fact, since I have lived in our home at 51 Lake Street, that road with maintenance work has shifted far off to the front of, in toward our house. And I would hope that at a minimum, there'll be stakes showing the proper and legal layout of the road.
I think what you're going to find in this here is it's, there's probably not a lot of control out in that street, because every drawing that I've seen, it's a variable width. So if we want to move the road a little bit towards your house or away from your house, we probably could, because they're just on any set bounds. The only thing we have that history has given us is some of the stone walls that were set there by farmers some years and years ago. So...
I assume also, I'm sorry. I assume also there'll be a hearing for the removal of the trees on a scenic way?
As the law requires.
That is required, yeah. But there's, we're not, there's no intent, I think we're all in agreement on this, there's no intent to do the minimal amount of disruption if we go this way to that road. I mean, I think everyone agrees you don't want to lose that.
There is the intent to do the minimal.
Did I say it wrong? I apologize.
Eyes got kind of big out there.
Let's correct that one, then. I apologize. No, we do not want to disrupt, we want to disrupt as little as possible what you have there today, no matter what, no matter what solution we come to. I mean, that message we heard loud and clear, and you live there. It's your role. You should have that decision. That should be yours. So we'll set a time, and Bob, you're suggesting March?
Better weather time, and then that way I can get a layout, plan view.
Okay.
We can do it in two sessions, if you want. We can go indoor and talk about it Friday afternoon.
We'll make sure everybody knows about it. That'll give us plenty of time to send you all a letter. We'll pick the day, try and do one when the weather forecast isn't pouring or something. Although, that might be a good day to do it, actually, to see where the water goes. Does anyone have any final comments, or? Some of you have not shared your thoughts, if you want to? I thank you all for coming. And we appreciate your frankness.
Absolutely.
I don't want to, I'd like to do it online, but I'm not sure if you would trust that. I mean, I'd like to just...
You have to make sure you get one vote.
Yeah, exactly. One vote. Wouldn't it be nice to know, you know, exactly, that's the best numbers we can get?
Thank you for that. Take care. You taking good care of my grandson?
I tried.
He's tough, isn't he?
He is very tough.
Yeah, nope, there is a competitive bone in his body.
Yeah, Rich.
He works hard. He's good. He's good by himself. Thank you very much for holding us.
Thank you. Oh, no, it's, you should be part of the decision. Thank you.
Yeah. Good ending.
We're still on mic. Okay, no, yeah, no.
It's fine. Yes, sir. Oh, thanks very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
We should have the chief's call, Ed. Who wasn't going to do that?
I know sometimes it's painful, but it's the right thing to do. I think that was a great suggestion. You part as well. You do need to be prepared. Showing up there on Tuesday wouldn't be a good thing. And we need time to kind of get it laid out and so on. But I don't know how you all heard that, but I heard that we're pretty much at a consensus of paving it. As long as it can be done in a way that we try to protect some of the aesthetics that some of the neighbors are very concerned about, which I think we can do.
I wouldn't use more consensus. I'd use majority, you know, because a consensus would be everyone agreeing.
I think you can, I think we're getting close to a consensus, as long as we can preserve that. I mean, even what Ed just said here at the end, I think we're getting close.
I know Tara's very upset. She's very invested in her property and has always been.
Which is a good thing.
Hearings with her years ago and stuff. So that's good. She is, but she's very open to reason, so.
Yeah.
I think once we get Bob out there and she sees what you're planning.
I'm surprised she didn't think the water was going to go into the wetlands. I mean, that's what it does across the United States.
I don't think it was that. I think she's concerned about it. It goes there now. I think the issue is, is people get, and I understand this, people get concerned that when something changes, that they perceive will create a greater water flow, that it might create some flooding concerns, or in some way, change what they're currently used to.
It'll all sheet off into her front yard.
That's what I heard. But I heard a couple of things wrong tonight, anyway, so, you know, I'm obviously not processing very well here. Jack, I'm sorry.
A couple of things. A few years ago, they had the state really pushed out the low-impact development materials. And that's exactly what we're talking about here, is, you know, the berms that you're talking about, and the swales, and get rid of the big storm drains, and, you know...
There's actually a session on pervious pavement at the conference this week.
There is, yeah. It's actually on the list I was going to go to.
I wasn't going to go to that one.
I'll go to it. I'll be the pervious pavement expert on this by the time I get done. Some things I really don't want to know.
But I think, you know, that's a good educational material that we can share with people. Rick, I guess was his name, he has a great idea. You know, if we make the surface, it sounds kind of counterintuitive, but we make the surface less than perfect, you know, you know, I mean, you've gone over, you've gone over concrete-type materials or other materials where it's, even to make rumble, you know, you almost make rumble strips the entire stretch of the road. That'll keep people going slow, so they're...
You know, it is interesting, because I did do an ROI on this.
A what?
Return on investment. And I did analyze these options, and it's very clear. I mean, when you look at it purely from a town finance perspective, as Rob pointed out earlier in the conversation, and I apologize, I keep turning my back to you here, but I know you weren't at the meeting, and...
I watched it.
And the wisdom was to stay out of this. I compliment you on it.
Bit my tongue.
The return, the ROI on this is, it points only one direction. It's a no-brainer. The, the return, the ROI on this is, it points only one direction, it's a no-brainer.
Where's the, where do you think the best, biggest benefit is? Because I, nobody talks about it.
The biggest benefit, in what regard?
Cost savings, to everybody.
You mean, which one is the biggest benefit? Paving it?
It's, the, the wreckage on their vehicles is going uncalculated.
Oh, I agree.
And the little shakings of the bolts and the washers and all that.
All takes a toll.
But you can't measure that, and if you Google this stuff, you're going to find out that that's always coming to the top. It's always coming, the, the ones that you can measure here for this conversation are quite simply, you put it down, you walk away for six or eight years. That saves equipment, saves us from going out onto another job, we've got to break it down.
Use of personnel, the whole thing.
It's all, so.
And that's what I was trying to explain to this gentleman, it, it's far more than just the 20% of, of materials that we talk about, it is the use of people, because if they're on this street, they're not on another street, so you have to weigh that, and there is a cost to that. And if we had unlimited resources, that wouldn't matter, but we don't.
Well, in reality, that the 10-year asphalt gets stretched to 15 to 20 years, I mean, because of the budget realities, I mean, so that, that return on investment gets stretched even farther.
Absolutely, because you're really, as I said to this gentleman, you're talking about 2,400 square feet, really.
Right.
You're not talking about the 540, and you're not talking about the 1,200, because those decisions are pretty much made. So when you look at it purely from a 2,400 square foot, it is a no-brainer, and it is like a three-to-four-year return, and that I'd take any day of the week.
Yeah.
If you can get it under five, you've got a good investment. So, you know, we used to look at every capital expenditure, if we could get it between a three- and a five-year return, we made that deal.
I think the lights were a five-year ROI for the CFLs.
If you do a traffic count on that, that pavement might last 20 years. I mean, it might just dry off in the sun before.
Ask Bob about that.
I was going to, yeah.
Could we get a real traffic count?
Yeah, I was wondering about that too, Bob, because it is a matter of where, and, and I suspect you're right, I mean, the reality is, I think it would last a whole lot longer, but you don't want to.
Can we throw a "not a thruway" sign up? What would that?
Well, you can definitely put a "no-through trucking" sign or something like, I mean, we have that on Tucker Road.
Traffic.
No-through traffic.
They have those in, where is it, Shannon or something?
Chuck will kill me, I'd put them up, I'd probably.
Just put them up.
Can you do it legally, and just?
Just put it up.
You don't say anything.
Just put it up. I agree.
It's highly unenforceable, but it might.
Residents only?
Must have pass.
You need a permit to go down the road?
There's no reason why, you know, there's a couple of other things too, and I hope that there isn't a head-on there or something like that, of course, that we're not building the street to a minimum standard, because we are leaving it at 16 or 18 feet.
Right.
That we aren't part of a liability suit. In the same respect, we could probably post out for 15 or 20 miles an hour speeding, and I don't see why we can't. I really don't.
Post it 20 now, so you can go to 15.
You go down, and the Freeman access road should be 15 miles an hour, because if you go down that street, like today, you couldn't go down 15 miles an hour, but if you go down that on a good day, go 20 miles an hour, 25 miles an hour, you feel like you're speeding.
What is the surface on Freeman, is that just blinder?
Right now, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's pretty good. It's pretty good.
On which road?
The access road.
Oh, the access road.
Rob's thruway.
I thought you said Freeman, I was confused about it.
No, no, that's the Garrity thruway.
The Freeman Freeway?
No.
I, I do think there are things we can do to do that, you know, no-through traffic would be a great one to put up, children, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to even a portable, you can't do it in the wintertime, but I mean, a portable speed bump or something, I mean, we can do something to give the people some comfort that they can slow that down.
Might even, maybe Ed Nolan can find us a grant for a solar speed thing that says your speed. You know, it's just got the little solar on it.
He'll pick down some trees to get the solar in there.
I would love to talk to Chuck about the impact of every day for, every day for a week, what happens when he does, when they do do a speed, you know.
You mean what the results are?
Yeah, what the results are, does it actually change behavior?
Well, if my, traveling up and down Union Street for the last week, when I've seen them there for at least four times is any indication, our revenues are up.
No, but does it change behavior? It does, I think a little bit.
Sure, it does change behavior.
Because Union Street, they're always out there.
Do you, do you go down Union Street and not think about a police officer being on Union Street?
No, I always think about it, because.
I always do too, always.
Because everyone's speeding, that's the thruway.
I always think about a police officer being in one of two locations.
That and also on the way to Franklin, to hang out by the pond.
Always. All by the pond, right. They, they.
Couple of conversations with police officers.
It's the Pavlovian theory, just, you know, show up enough and you'll be there.
Union, Union, that's the one off the.
Right. We should do something like they did in World War II and have blow-up pace cars.
Well, I was, actually, the thing I was going to interrupt you and say is, does there have to actually be a cop in it? Because we've got, what, 12 cars?
Actually, it would have an impact.
Let's just park these babies around town.
Put a dummy in it?
Yep, yeah, because as soon as you see it, it's a gut reaction, it's slowed down, and then you go by, oh, silly me, there's nothing.
You're not going to speed up anyway, you're not going to call your friends, say, oh, you're going to speed up, it's not a cop there.
Right.
So it does work.
We've got all these cars.
I, I think, I think we made progress. I think. I think we made progress tonight.
I think so, absolutely.
Yeah.
Be interesting.
Bob, thank you very much. I, I know it's.
There's anything else there? Do you need me? Are we going to, oh, Chapter 90?
Can we talk about Grove Street? No, I'm just kidding.
You'll probably go to Green tomorrow, I have some street issues I'd like to talk to you about.
We need, Bob gave me paperwork today, and I didn't bring it, but we need, do you remember when we made a decision about a year ago to allocate $10,000 towards the engineering on the?
Yes.
You know, so we, that's Chapter 90 fund, so we need to, we just need to do some paperwork on that, for the engineering.
We did.
What do we need to do?
No, we did vote.
I think we just need to sign the, sign the paperwork.
We just needed, we did vote it.
I saw you got one of your compactors up.
Yes, cardboard.
Congratulations on that.
Well, that's, we waited, because Christmas has got a big impact, and people move like a school of fish, you know, and you've got to be.
Were you there this Saturday?
Yes.
It was a mess.
Yeah.
People just were confused, they had no idea what they were doing.
You got the big sign up.
You've got to, you've got to be careful, and we got the sign up, because we, it's a great operation, and people, I mean that.
Do you have any feel, is it too early to get a feel?
Success, yeah, right away. We got a new house up, it's all wired for observation, so now we have somebody that can monitor this, so you, the last thing you want to see is somebody fall into the dumpster, so we have a.
That's not funny.
You have an automatic switch, I mean, it's part of what you do, and it shuts down all power, and, we can do, there's a million more things we can do there, I'm telling you.
Keep thinking.
Like, I always like wiring it for speakers and stuff like that, and you have like a, you can see it, and you can tell people. Don't forget the, you know, a little thing to hit the button that says, don't forget the Christmas hours it's going to be, we're open to, you know, little info, informative thing.
Well, there really aren't any neighbors.
There aren't any days, there aren't daytime hours.
Not in sound, not within hearing.
Well, only across the street.
Keep out of state, so.
Yeah, over on Bruce.
Well, these are just little speakers.
Well, Bob, thank you very much.
Okay, fellas, thanks.
Thanks for putting up with us.
Actually, Bob Bullock and I had a visit, well, Bob had a visit, I just sat in on, from, I think his name is Steve Bassett, runs Dover Trucking, you know him? Dover Trucking is a competitor of Callahan and BFI and all that, and they've, they're going to single stream in April, so that's, and they have, I think he said he has 600 customers in Norfolk, so that's a.
So is that single stream for recycling, so there'll be, you trash and you recycle?
Yep, and they'll, so right now, they do glass on, on Week A, and they do paper on, glass and plastics on A Week, and then paper on B Week, paper on cardboard. Now they're just going to give you one of those big, giant, I think 95, was it 95-gallon containers, and that's going to be all recycling, just all throw it in that bucket.
Paper, glass, everything?
Yeah.
I know we have received a complaint from the family member of a Hillcrest resident where they don't do recycling, and their current hauler is Callahan, and I know Callahan's recycling program is not, it's not single-streaming in it. You know, I, I don't know if there's anything we can do to help the housing authority get their act together on the recycling.
Well, there's more, there's more to that.
Well, I know.
You know. I mean, you know they did it before.
Yes.
They did recycle once before.
That was explained to me.
I bet it was explained in more detail than it was to recycle.
I just think a state agency should follow the state rules.
Not under this board.
I don't run that agency.
No, nor do we.
Finish, your spouses and mother-in-laws and stuff. You're, just to finish the thing about Dover.
He's addressing this side of the table, by the way, not mine.
He's actually one of the guys looking at Shire Development to.
Oh, come in.
He's got a Medfield operation now.
One question, Bob, we, we've had this.
It wouldn't be for garbage, it would just be for his, for his trucks.
That he would hose down.
Pick up and go get rid of it, and then park the trucks.
We've had this discussion about co-mingling several times around recycling.
It doesn't make sense to do it in his operation, it doesn't.
Well, it does make sense if the market's down, but you can't keep going back and forth with people, because you, because they get aggravated, they're.
And they should, you've got to make up a decision, make a decision.
The people who use your operation are used to separating their stuff.
Yeah, and they see that that's, you know, they're doing their part, and they're teaching their children, it's all, it's all good, and sometimes it's not about the, the most money that you can make.
But the co-mingled stuff, did, did you guys have a quote on the tonnage on that?
I don't know that we get paid anything for that one. If we would decide to go co-mingling, it's because there's no markets for plastics, for any, anything else, so we just all throw it into a compactor and.
And there's still a market for some of your products.
For number one, for number one plastics is, right?
So, like, for instance, they have the three through sevens.
No, I know, I understand.
I don't know what the yellow sheet is lately, but it's not as good.